I'd like to call the board of the Bucksport Town Council new for Thursday, October 11th, 2018. Road call, please, Kathy.
Mark Peterson.
Here.
Paul Rabb.
Here.
David Keen.
Here.
Peter Stewart.
Here.
Paul Goffin.
Here.
Okay, item three is a presentation of the town council recognitions. Richard Campbell was going to be here, I don't see him on here, so if he shows up, we'll go back to it. Item four, considered minutes of previous meetings. We have minutes from September 27th, 2018 town council meetings. We have October 4th town council meetings, September 27th, finance committee meetings, September 27th infrastructure and property committee meetings, and September 27th, 2018 regulatory review committee meetings. How would the council like to proceed?
Motion approved.
We have motion and second to approve the minutes as related here, okay? So we've got September 27th, October, we've got four from September 27th, one from October 4th. Anything from the public on this? Anything further from the council? All those in favor? Opposed, motion passes. Item five, receive and review correspondence and documents. Historical society request to use parking lot behind post office on 6/23/19. So that's next June. You have anything on this?
We have an email from Gary Bagley at the Historical Society, which is in the packet. It says, "I'm the vice president of the Bucksport Historical Society. We are planning a one-day yard sale next year, Saturday, June 23rd, as a fundraiser. Would it be possible to use the town parking lot behind the post office that day?" Thank you. So...
Any reasons they can't use it? Motion to approve.
Second.
Good answer.
They're ahead of the crowd, for sure.
Is that a Saturday?
Yes.
Okay, we have a motion and second to approve the Historical Society request for using the parking lot behind the post office on June 23rd, 2019. Anything further from the public? From the council? All those in favor? Opposed, motion passes. Okay, item six, enact chapter five, building codes and standards.
All of these are after the public hearings that correspond with them. This is just how they fall on the agenda. All of these public hearings have to happen before those.
Okay. All right, we'll get out and set public hearings on. We actually have a public hearing. Okay, we'll take up enactment of chapter five, building codes and standards. Is the public hearing open? Any comments from the public? Jeff, do you have anything to add to this?
Well, I can just go over briefly and summary again what this ordinance is about. It's to reformat the chapter to be consistent with other reformatted content in the town code, changing administrative procedures, recognizing the various codes and standards enforced by the town, clarifying when a permit is required, adding permit exemptions, adopting standard for tiny houses, removing property maintenance standards and demolition standards, and relocating the standards to a separate chapter of the town code, providing for a local appeal process, providing for waivers, clarifying enforcement procedures, and updating definitions. That's, in a nutshell, what chapter five is about.
Any comments from the public? The council? Okay, we're going to declare the public hearing closed on this one, we'll act on it. We'll declare the public hearing closed. How would the council like to proceed on the enactment of chapter five, building codes and standards?
Motion approved.
Second. We have motion and second to approve the enactment of chapter five, building codes and standards. All those in favor? Opposed, motion passes. Okay, next one is enact chapter two, personnel section, 11 employee responsibility. Is the public hearing open? Jeff, do you have any comment on this one? Sue?
This one is to make the town code and the town charter consistent in the defining what town employees are precluded from running for town council. And it amends the town code to agree with the town charter that that prohibition is for full-time employees and their spouses.
Okay, any comment from the public on this?
Full-time being the key here. Full-time is the change.
Full-time is the decision.
Anything else from the public? From the council? We'll declare the public hearing closed. How would the council like to proceed on the enactment of chapter two, personnel section 11, employee responsibility?
Motion approved.
Second. We have motion and second to approve the enactment of chapter two, personnel section 11. Are those in favor? Opposed, motion passes. Okay, the next one is enact chapter 13, property maintenance standards. Is the public hearing open? Jeff?
Chapter 13 is actually a new chapter added to the town code for the purpose of relocating the property maintenance standards and demolition standards that were previously in chapter five, which is no longer the case. And they have, the language has been reformatted and clarified, and a couple of new provisions are added, including standards that address excessive vegetation that creates a safety hazard. That's a new property maintenance requirement that we don't have now. And there's an appeal process that's been added as well, but essentially, most of the property maintenance standards that were previously in chapter five are still here, but they're now in chapter 13, and in some cases rewarded for clarity.
Okay, is the public hearing, any comments from the public? From the council? We'll declare the public hearing closed. How would the council like to proceed?
Motion approved.
Second. We have motion and second to approve the enactment of chapter 13, property maintenance standards. All those in favor? Opposed, motion passes. Item D is general assistance ordinance repeal and replace appendix A, B, C, and D, and appendix M. Is the public hearing open? Susan?
This is the annual update to our general assistance ordinance that we have provided. This is a state program administered locally, but the state sets the maximums that can be awarded to people who apply, and defines levels of income for eligibility, and those change annually, and we're required to have a public hearing on that and adopt the new regulations that are given to us for the state each year.
Okay, the public hearing's open. Any comments from the public? Sir?
What are the major changes? Is it more stringent standard?
No, the changes to this, general assistance is a pretty stringent program anyway, but this change increases the maximums to reflect cost of living adjustments.
Thank you.
Any further from the council? Okay, we'll declare the public hearing closed. How would the council like to proceed?
Second.
We have motion and a second to enact general assistance ordinance repeal and replace appendices. All those in favor? Opposed, motion passes. Okay, Mr. Campbell has come, and we're going to go back to item three, discussing Wilson Hall.
Good evening. My name's Dick Campbell, and just sort of a recap from what we talked about earlier. I like your sweater. The, my passion has been two things in my 45 years of construction. One is passionate solar, and the other is saving and repurposing buildings. So that's what got my attention some time ago, when Don Outen and Larry Wall and I decided that maybe there is a way to save this building. At that point, we were looking for uses, and hoping that maybe some of the nonprofits or the arts or somebody could come up with a real need for the building. That didn't work, lasted about a year. And so this time, when I entered into an agreement to pursue it, we were looking at more residential. The thought at that point was boutique aging in place, and I thought it was quite necessary to have some element of additional services provided, because market rents just weren't going to make it happen. More recently, we decided to pursue that, and since I've met with you, we have talked to two other providers, one in the Russo County and one mid-coast, and they're not interested either. So we were thinking about different residential uses, and came up with some pretty good concepts, but I've met with my partner from Virginia this morning, and he's pretty optimistic about the project. He's the numbers guy. He puts the sources and uses together. He puts the most important return on investment numbers together, and he's pretty optimistic, because he works the numbers and I work the construction. So if I happen to mess up with the construction or find something that is unknown, then that tanks the return on investment. We've had several investors look at it. We've had, as a part of our partnership, investors. They liked it because of the tax credits. When, in residential use, you can participate in the tax credits for historic buildings, both historic and residential tax credits. We really thought long and hard about it. I guess we have one more day, a meeting with him again in the morning. I think one of the big knots was the elevator. The elevator is somewhere between $120,000 and $150,000, which is closing in on about 20% of the construction budget. It's important to have it, especially if we were to pursue the upper floors, and especially the rooftop. And it was a situation where we're probably about 8% short on the return on investment. So from my perspective, it puts a lot of pressure on the construction piece. And 8%, he's happy with, because if things went well, and the market rent happened to be a little bit higher, residential needs are significant in the area. The Bangor market is really deficient. There's not enough either rentals or even housing, houses or new construction. Our banking partners were just excited about it, because it's a rehab. It's more of a risk for them. But the partner, John Seitz, has convinced them that it probably would work. But I'm a little concerned that there's a little more pressure on me than on the other guys. So at this point, I think we're going to continue to meet on it and see what we can come up with, but I think at this point, maybe there's a chance for a nonprofit or somebody to come in. I've been hearing with some interest in that. Our hope was that we would get the building back on the tax rolls and have a different piece in the community that would provide significant service. We're optimistic with Whole Oceans, Maine Maritime Academy. We explored, we're involved with traveling nurses from the Bangor side, hoping something like that would work to bring that market rent up a little bit, more of a service, maybe even a little shorter term. So I guess at this point, we've done pretty much all we can do. We are, there's been some mention that maybe you ought to tear it down right off. We're going to meet in the next day or so to figure out whether or not there is any way we can turn those numbers around to make it work, but at this point, I think we've made quite a run at it, and we're close, but no cigar.
Well, I thank you for your efforts. I mean, you know, you put a lot of work and time and effort into it, so...
It could have been a fun project, but, you know, the bankers aren't into fun right now. They're into making sure that the numbers work, which is the way it should be. So I appreciate the opportunity, and as I mentioned to John this afternoon, you know, it may be still standing, and there isn't another user, and the first of the year, we might come back, but if we come back, we'll come back with a whole offer and everything in place.
Okay. Look, I don't, the building's not going to be torn down tomorrow, or somebody's not going to develop it tomorrow. You know, we have to go through the whole process of what we want to do with the building.
Yeah.
So, you know, the opportunity may come back up again.
Well, good luck. We've got a lot of due diligence in there, so if I can help in any way to you or the next one, I'd be more happy to share anything that we've done.
I think we'd like to get it back on the tax rolls, but...
Yeah.
Okay.
It's a beautiful building, but it's a tough one.
Any other comments from the council? Okay, thank you very much.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Okay, we're going to go on to number seven, discussion items on a manager's clarification of direction of a council discussions. First one will be an infrastructure and property committee update for October 11th, 2018.
We had a number of agenda items. The first one was a bid to purchase map four, lot 250 Flanders Way. We had a bid of $5,000. There is, the town has $7,000 right now on the rural support. Committee's recommendation is to accept the bid. I recommend to the full council that we accept that bid, move forward on 50 Flanders Way. Bid of $5,000 from, which one, say, I lost track of who it was. Michelle.
Michelle.
So that's the first one. Second one was a, second item was a drainage issue up in Woodland Heights. The, that's been looked at by Oliver Associates. Long story short, recommendation is that they do some, take incremental steps to see how it works before going full bore into a major project, and the compromise is basically to do some ditching along the area between Woodland and Spruce, see how that goes with the water flow before taking any more steps to change culverts or doing anything more extensive down below. So that's, in a nutshell. That had been, there had been some standing water, primarily in heavy rains, or mostly in the winter, up in the Woodland Heights area of it, and so they're going to, we're going to recommend that they do the ditching first, do the ditching between Woodland and Spruce, and then see how that goes up there. The next one is a, oh, the other part of that was the Main Street, Main Street project, the parking area, and the recommendation is to take the information from Oliver Associates, the estimate for the total work based on the specifications in their design or their determination is $100,850 potentially. Recommendation from committee is for the council to continue the due diligence, go out for bids, and determine how best to get that project done, given that information. And the consensus was that there is a need to do that project, both from the standpoint of the parking and the, in light of the impact of the businesses in that area. The next one was just a safety, was just, but safety committee recommendations developed by the safety committee, a number of recommendations on how to secure the town office more appropriately. So the recommendation of the committee is for the town to develop more information on funding priorities, and bring that before the council to better secure this building. And the last one was just a sign eight update by the code enforcement officer on how to better utilize the open Bucksport sign, and recommendation is to give them authorization to continue exploring, options to improve that, to better use, to make it more of a use for open banners and those sorts of things. That's it.
Thank you. Any comments from the public on any of those issues? Counsel? Okay, we're going to, finance committee update for October 11th, 2018.
Yes, the committee met, and we decided that on the funding level, the maximum tax appropriation for non-municipal agency funding shall not exceed, rather than the 0.75%, it shall not exceed 1% of the prior year tax commitment.
This also, this is a committee recommendation that's going to come to the full council.
But it's not going to be acted on tonight.
No.
Same with the whole...
Next week.
That's correct.
Okay. Any comment from the public on this? From the council? Okay, if not, we'll go on to the next one. Service committee update, 10/11/18.
The only agenda item was an application for appeals board membership. We have one applicant, Richard Peterson, and the committee is recommending to the council that we approve that application.
Is that something we can approve tonight?
It's on the agenda.
All right, last one being, Hat and Soul's presentation on community action plan.
Hi, I'm Nancy Minett, Bucksport residence, resident, and member of the Bucksport Heart and Soul group, team, work. Before I start, I just want to give a special thanks to Jeff Hammond and Rich Rotella, who worked with me for over an hour today to try to get my photos onto Jeff's computer, and I appreciate that so much. Thank you, town manager and town councilors, for this opportunity to share the Bucksport Heart and Soul action plan with you. It is a time to pause, remember how we got to this moment, breathe a big sigh of relief, celebrate the citizen-driven action plan, and then look forward to what comes next to maintain momentum of this community development process and support the implementation of the action plan, the 82 citizen-generated ideas. Stories, that's really been the heart and soul of this project, and really, the last two and a half years of this project is in and of itself a story, and we think it's a good story, well worth a read. The authors of this story are the citizens of our community. The illustrators are photos by Hans Christels and Karen Johnson. A good story, as you may well know, has five elements, which keep it running smoothly and allow the action to develop in a logical way that the reader can follow. First, you need a setting. January 2016 to October 2018 and beyond, in the community of Bucksport, Maine, located on the beautiful Penox Scott River with farmlands and 18 miles from so many places. Second, you need strong characters, and this story has all major characters, the citizens of this community, hundreds of people who call this community home. A good story has a conflict, the challenge or problem around which the story is based. The conflict in this story is to record data collected as the town rediscover's what matters most to the citizens in their community, reclaiming its heart and soul through the voices of the people. The plot of our story developed through a series of events. Citizens attended block parties, met volunteers at the Heart and Soul headquarters, on the street, at the Bay Festival booth, in their schools, and in their homes, sharing and recording the stories of what mattered to them in their community. Citizens attended listening sessions to highlight the values in the stories, along with their hopes and dreams for our community. Citizens created nine community statements, which reflect what is most important to the citizens, and will guide future decisions for our town. The town council adopted these statements in January 2017. Citizens attended discussions about how these statements are reflected in our community. Citizens brainstormed ideas for nurturing these values in our communities, and citizens voted on the feasibility and impact of each of the 82 action ideas in our community. Groups and individuals stepped forward to support or lead the implementation of the ideas. The first volunteer fair was held in collaboration with the Bucksport Area YMCA. Implementation of many of these ideas are already underway. The Bucksport Heart and Soul Action Plan was completed and delivered to the town council. A heart and soul stewardship group was established to maintain momentum and ensure success in implementing the community's action plan. This group will keep track of the 82 citizen-generated ideas and ensure that the town is considering the community's statements during decision-making. The Bucksport Heart and Soul Stewardship Group's first meeting is on October 24th, 6:00 to 8:00, at the Bucksport High School library. Everyone is invited to join. There has been tremendous positive response from many community organizations who will attend, eager to share their stories of the ideas they have implemented. So that's the heart and soul story so far. The beauty of this story is that it has no ending. The characters will grow in number. The heart and soul of our community will be reflected through the thoughtful decision-making based on the community's statements. Through collaboration and hard work, the 82 citizen-generated action ideas will be implemented, and we will continue to listen to each other's stories to create a thriving community for all who call this home. We look forward to the coming years with enthusiasm and confidence. I'm John Paulston. Thank you.
Thank you. Thanks.
That's a tough act to follow. I just wanted to take a minute to thank, we're not going to thank everybody, but first, the town of Bucksport, the leadership of Sulezard in helping us bring heart and soul, the foresight of the council to support the concept, not only in concept and by letting Rob work with us throughout the process, but also financially by allowing a good portion of Rich Rotella's time up front, and then financing Nancy's, you know, part-time salary on that. So, you know, that's a lot of foresight in the council on that. The Orton Foundation for helping bring this to us, the Jane LaFleur for coaching us. I wanted to back up a minute, and there was a couple of town, town community members who first brought the idea of heart and soul, and I think, you know, their persistence was very vital in bringing this to us. very vital in bringing this to us. All the volunteers in the town, 10,000-plus hours of volunteer time, yeah, there was a core group of volunteers, but there was over 200, 300 people who volunteered at some point, somewhere along the line. So, it really was a community effort. And all the different groups in town that collaborated with heart and soul to help make this a reality. And, you know, but mostly just the people of Bucksport, you know, the community of Bucksport that came out to the dinners, came out to tell their story. They're the ones who really hats off to, because without their participation, it just would have been a, you know, a group well and away, but not getting anywhere. So, it was really about the people, the town of Bucksport, to help support this. Thank you.
Thank you.
Anyone else on this issue?
I want to thank you for coming and presenting tonight. I, I think that what has occurred is extremely valuable. This council, seven elected officials, myself, sometimes we find ourselves trying to make decisions in a vacuum, because you generally don't see people in the audience a lot unless someone's angry about something. So, all of this groundwork done from a grassroots effort, from the people of the community, not generated by government, provides for this council a really good lens through which to look at its actions and to have a level of confidence that that lens has been derived from what is important to the people of this community. So, thank you all very much.
Okay, we'll go on to agenda items. The one item on the agenda is to approve, resolve R.2019-20, to approve A. requisition 28 for the sewer treatment plant project. To approve. Second. Anything to say on that?
One piece of this is during the sewer treatment plant project, it was determined, or actually, I think before it started, that there was a cemetery adjacent to the property that was, the area was fenced off during the entire, or taped off during the entire construction, and following the construction, a fence has been put up around that, a sign is going on that memorializing the Frye Cemetery, and there will be coming up a dedication of that cemetery. The details are still being worked out on that, but Kathy, did you?
The 27th of October.
The 27th of October. Emmerich Spooner is organizing the celebration, but one of the bills in here, if you noticed, was for a fence, and that's what the fence was, the fences to, and our engineering company is donating the sign for that.
Revolutionary War soldiers, very good. Okay, we did have a motion and a second to approve the, resolve, anything further from the public, from the council? All those in favor? Those, motion passes. Okay, item nine, resignations, appointments, assignments, or elections. We do have one appointment, to appoint Richard Peterson to the appeals board. How would the council like to proceed?
Motion approved. Second.
Okay, we have a motion and a second to appoint Richard Peterson to the appeals board. Anything further from the public, from the council? All those in favor? Those, motion passes. Kathy, you hit something on the elections?
Yes, I have two warrants. I have a school warrant and I have a remiss of the warrant for the election coming up that just needs to be signed, so I can post it. And I have to sign three copies.
Trying to hurt my hand?
Yeah, I know, I'm sorry.
I actually did. I actually came from work there. I did change. Well, we're signing that, we can go down to item 11, town manager's report. Patman had the report.
Wait, have we missed one?
We missed the quick claim deeds.
The quick claim deeds.
Yeah, I was going to do that, so that we can talk about it, and I don't want to go sign.
Go ahead.
Okay, manager's report. The six Bucksport Town Council candidates are being invited to take part in a candidates' forum on Tuesday, October 23, at 6:30 PM in the library at Bucksport High School. The moderator will be Reverend York of the Elm Street Congregational Church, who is a former member of the Dear Isle Stonington School Board. He and his wife now reside on Barona Island. The public is invited to attend this session and get to know the candidates that are seeking election to the Bucksport Town Council. There's also a candidate forum for legislative candidates that will be for state and house and senate candidates from this region on Monday, October 15, at the Orland Community Center, sponsored by the League of Women Voters. I have been asked to moderate that session, and it starts at 6:00 PM, but doors will be open at 5:30. And MAP 50 lot 20 on Long Pond is a lot owned by the town, which was discussed a committee meeting prior to a council meeting two weeks ago. That lot is, has access issues in terms of legal right of access, and it's a lot where the water's very shallow in front of it, so it's not a good lot for the town to try and have public access from a boat launch or something like that. The committee had asked, because of that, to seek bids on this lot from a butters, and from a butters because others would have access, difficulty in accessing the lot. There's, the access is in question. So, our assessor has sent out notices to the butters of that lot and will be receiving bids back by October 31, and the council can then decide what it wants to do for the future of that lot. The contractor's behind schedule and now indicates that the Wilson Hall upper portion of the tower will be removed by October 18. It was initially thought that it would be done by October 9. And finally, for the council, it's been our practice for some time now to schedule committee meetings just prior to council meetings, and there's been some feedback that it makes for a really long night when we front-load them that way. And so, my question is, does the council want to move some of these committee meetings to other nights? And if so, you know, when or how? The practice had been that meetings were on the, prior to council meetings, to limit the number of nights that councillors were out, but if it's becoming problematic, tonight we had four, that's unusual. Usually it's two. But I need some feedback from all of you before I schedule anymore.
I'd be recommendations to stay the way we are.
I agree.
I agree.
It's a long night, but it's one night, as opposed to multiple.
You know, the issues that were discussed in committee tonight, there were a couple things that have been hanging around for quite a while, and we got engineering reports back, and, you know, one only took less than 15 minutes. I would like to see us take a pause on converging ordinances, you know, cut, I mean, from the short time that I left, it seemed like the first meeting in July, it took like two and a half months of converging the written word on ordinances, creating a new one, and then a new section, and then you've got first reading, second reading, public hearing, an amount of the two and a half, and I think, I think we're finally clear of all that. But Jeff, you do great work, but could we take a pause for a while to, you know, I think that would be a big, big help too, but the other stuff, the other committees, I think it just hit, it was the tsunami of everything hitting at the right time.
Yeah, just looking for feedback. I, I'm happy to schedule however you want to do this, but it.
I agree with you.
Okay. All right, thank you.
Thanks for asking.
I brought pizza tonight because you're here at 5:00.
And we appreciate that.
Sue, I have a question.
Yeah.
Well, this first one, the candidate, candidate forum, if I recall, three years ago, there was six or seven candidate, was it nine? Really? Well, I was thinking six or seven, but, and it was at the Alamo. Are we sure that the library would be big enough?
We didn't organize this, but hold on.
Okay. I'm just, I'm not questioning the forum itself, I'm just saying.
If you can handle 20 or 50.
In the library?
Yeah.
The library, is that big?
Yes.
I didn't spend a lot of time that night. All right, good.
More than keeping it, thanks to the issue of Mr. Bob and other people involved, we're hoping to at least take a video on the system, the possibility to be done live, so you can see our six candidates by that night, or at least several times between that night and the actual election. So, it gives more access to people who might not want to come out to see the meeting, or would like to hear.
Okay, that's perfect. I didn't realize it was that big. Thank you.
Yes.
I guess so.
Do people submit questions prior to?
If you submit them to either myself or Reverend York, which we're.
But I'll keep the questions that you submit there.
We're going to try and keep at least 44, because we're going to try and have this run from 6:30 to 8:00. Obviously, it's pretty interesting to continue at night. If anybody has got a question, I could send them along. The same questions we ask each candidate, and each candidate will write the own statements at the beginning. We want to keep this thoroughly done, because the way the election process always has been the way it's been.
When do we get access to those questions?
When we submit questions.
When will be extended?
Oh, January 15.
I understand the need for efficiency in 6:30 to 8:00. Seems like in forums, like, that questions will be raised, because of differences. Is it, is it real possible to keep it, using space elsewhere for, is there a prompt for questions?
Yeah. Pretty much follow the form I offered me at the Alamo. It's not a trick, anybody, let's just get exposed.
More, more details are coming, right? Okay. We're going to go back to item 10. We'll go back to item 10, approve quick claim deeds and discharges, deeds, to approve quick claim deed to Jackie Anne Shelley, Shelley, Donald Shelley, Deborah Lee Madsen, and James Suter for MAP 47 lots 7 and 8. Sue, do you have anything more on this?
This is the bid for the Edna Irving lots that you accepted at your last meeting. The people paid the, agreed upon money, and this is the quick claim deed to the people that you awarded that bid to.
Motion approved.
There we have it. Motion and second, approve the quick claim deed. Anything further from the public? From the council? And these liens go back to 2012, 2013, 14, 15, 16, 17, and 18, right?
It's now paid through current, through 2019.
Is there only one of them?
No, there's, there's two of them, and there's some coming this way and some coming that way, but you all need to sign the same documents.
It's fine.
Well, if you've already done that, maybe just give them these, and you'll, okay.
It's pulling up like.
You shouldn't have skipped it.
Yes, it stops to take a shower.
Never mind, they can do. I know, but please. This one's, that one's, I don't need this one.
Sue, there's only two of them, right?
But I, but, those are the ones we, please sign those.
Okay.
Thank you.
Item 12, we set public hearings, hold public hearings, and includes any licenses or permits. We held a public hearings, now we're going on to a approval of a license, and it's for Leslie Womack, up at the VA Chamber of Commerce for Ghost Port on Saturday, October 20, 2018. How would the council like to proceed?
Motion approved. Second.
We have a motion and a second, approve the license for Ghost Port on October 20. Any further from the public? Yes, ma'am.
I'm just going to put out a plea for help with the treble shave issue. The gentleman who normally sets up and operates a treble shave is going to come, but he doesn't hurt yet, so he can't do any of the actual physical labor this year. So, if you guys have any time available on this one, you would like to come and help us launch pumpkins, and sign up.
Any further from the council on this? All those in favor? Close, motion passes. Okay, we'll go on to item 13, discussion items, not on the agenda for the council or public. I'll open it up to the public first. Any discussion items? Yes.
This is an announcement. Hi, I'm Melissa Laland, and hopefully you have seen notification of this, but Monday is the first of two alumni events, in which Bucksport High School alums, who have done unique or impressive things, are invited back. They'll spend a couple of hours at the school on Monday, and then at 6:00 at the Alamo that evening, they will sort of present their story one at a time, and then sit for Q and A, and we'll have a reception. So, it should be a nice celebration of what we produce in Bucksport. The second event will be about three weeks later on November 5, again, a Monday evening at the Alamo.
Who's presenting?
There are Amy Dresser-Poe, who is in Hollywood these days, and Gabe Sousa, and, all of a sudden, I'm blank. Thank you, Casey McGuire, who does medical research and.
They knew where the library was.
They knew where the library was. I know where it is.
Thank you.
You know where it is.
You know, I, I think that's a wonderful, I think that's a wonderful idea. I think that's a wonderful idea. Whoever, who gets the credit for coming up with this? Anybody, or bodies in particular?
Brooke Niner and I.
Okay. What a great, great idea to, for students to be able to hear that there's a world out there, and to be looked at in consideration of staying here in Bucksport. Nothing wrong with that, but at least let them know there are alternatives. Great. But why would anybody want to leave? So, we have that, you know.
Any other discussion items from the public? From the council?
Just two quick ones. One, I just want to quickly echo the congratulations to Heart and Soul group. You know, I remember the beginning, it's, you know, it's like this blind man. You know, I remember the beginning, it's, you know, it's like this blind canvas, and, you know, we were told, this is where you're going to get, this is what it's going to look like, and I know for a number of months, it was, it was a struggle trying to still visualize and get some sense of what it was, but to see the finished product that we have right now, finished but not finished, if you know what I mean, is just amazing. And the core group that really, a lot of people helped, as was mentioned, but a lot of the core group is right here, these people that were there day in and day out, did just a tremendous amount of work for that, and should be really applauded for helping move this community forward. And, you know, finally, I think Nancy, your work on this was outstanding and, you know, demonstrates that that investment that the town made for a part-time employee with this type of a thing was just priceless. So I just congratulate every one of you. We're a better town now, and we're going to be a better town years from now because of the work that you've done, so thank you for that. We reinvigorated the community groups and groups meetings we've had, sort of rebranded, I guess you will, as Bucksport Next, and had a nice meeting a couple of weeks ago, and I think the Whole Oceans people that were there couldn't speak highly enough of the different groups that spoke and the enthusiasm, the passion that is going on, and it's our hope to use this forum, this group, to coordinate, communicate, de-conflict, and help each other with resources throughout this effort that's continuing. And we're going to meet four times a year, and we look for any groups that want to join and share their stories, ask for help, so that we can continue this journey, so more to follow on that.
Okay. Any other discussion items? Okay, we have to set a infrastructure committee meeting. The chairman, are you the chairman?
Next, I'm not going to be here the next meeting.
The next meeting is the 25th, and I will not be here the 25th because it's the, the town is receiving an award from Main Development Foundation, along with Main Street Bucksport. Myself and our Economic Development Director and Main Street Bucksport Director will be attending that meeting in Portland that evening, so certainly welcome to have a meeting. I really think it's important, this is a significant award for the town, so I think that it's important that we.
This is the second one this month, isn't it?
Yeah, and we also have an emergency, so I think we've got it covered.
So we'll have our next council meeting be the first, the second Thursday in November? We will not have one on the 25th, is that how we're?
It'll be after elections, right?
That's after elections.
Okay.
Motion to adjourn.
Second.
That was next on the agenda, wasn't it?
So is there anything important to say?